Good evening, everybody. Welcome. So, I -- thank you. Mary Catherine gets extra points. So, welcome. This is the Budget Advance Meeting, the first of two that we anticipate. It is Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. Tonight's meeting, just for the benefit of the public, is conducted less formally than an actual council meeting, but we still have a number of items that we want to tackle as part of our budget advance. So, we will begin with some introductory comments from the administration and from the Clerk's office. And then beyond that, we have an opportunity for council members to share their priorities and their aspirations for the 2024 budget. The sections listed here, well, I'll actually save that until we get to that section. We'll then have an opportunity for public comment, both here and via Zoom. And then we will talk about next steps in the budgeting process. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the administration. I'm not sure who will be starting us off this evening.
Thank you. Good to be here. Can I turn this on? Or is this -- you're good. That's okay. Thanks, Blatt. I'll be very brief. We are here to listen. We look forward to working together, getting a good discussion, suggestions about the 2024 budget. We're very, very proud of the work we've done together over the last three budgets with this council and four before that with many of you. I will only say today, I think, that, you know, last year when we prepared this budget, I described it as a transformative budget for 2023, and I really think it is. It has been. We're in it right now. As you may recall, it was a 20% increase in budget from 22 to 23 in the Civil City, 29% increase in the budget if you count the three affiliates, if you will, the Utilities, Transit, and Housing Authority. Those were transformative changes. We look forward to working together to produce a great 2024 budget. It will include American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA money. This is the final year for us to appropriate that money under federal law in 2024. And then we have a couple of years after that to ultimately spend it. And I view this as our next chapter in 2024 of continuing to be an employer of choice, leaning into sustainability, as we have done, and leaning into inclusion and how we make sure the city works for everybody who is here and wants to be here. So, I encourage you to review priorities. I look forward to hearing that from you and look forward to continuing dialogue as we go forward.
Thank you.
Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit, a very little bit, in fact. Thank you for being here tonight with us. We appreciate this opportunity to listen. We are using, going to go forward with the information we gather tonight and use that to guide our thoughts and our work going forward. And thank you, too, for the time. I know you've already spent reflecting on the 2023 budget, how that's been going so far. I know it still seems really early in the year to be reflecting, but that kind of starts the minute the calendar turns over. So, anyway, looking forward to this evening and thanks for being here from 6:00 to 8:00 on a Tuesday night. Yeah, hey, Jim.
Councilmember. Oh, I'm sorry.
ARPA funds. That's a balance in there, roughly.
The ARPA fund?
Yeah.
We received $22 million in --
Yeah, balance.
That was the full amount.
Got it.
And in terms of, we don't know for sure, and we'll be getting that, but it's probably a third or plus that will be remaining to appropriate next year.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go to the Clerk. Madam Clerk, I believe you have some comments for us?
Not comments, but since we're talking about priorities and this is where we usually do it, or at least get started, I wanted to express both to the administration and to the council what we're looking for in the Clerk's office in the upcoming year. Actually, I'm going to say years because when we do have changes in our budget, we tend to keep them small. But this year, I'm looking for something a little more substantive. I know there are several potential topics listed that the council members are going to want to talk about. I do want to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. We did some training. Not all of the council members attended on a regular basis. And not all staff were able to participate on a regular basis. And I would like to see funding go into that and continue to go into that for the city. We are changing as a community, and our staff needs to keep up. So, I would like to see that. I would like to see more funding going toward training overall for education. One of the things that we have done through the Clerk's office is get additional training through that fund in particular. And we've gotten certified and everything else, so I'd like to see that continue. And last, perhaps most difficult, I would like to see increased funding for the Clerk's staff. I understand, in the past, there have been employment reviews that's handled through the administration, but it seems, based on the salaries and the work that Clerk's staff do, that there seems to be a fundamental misunderstanding of the importance of the office and the work that we do here. So, I'm open to and happy to have further discussions with the administration going into the budget season so we can talk about Clerk's staff and their salaries and my salary as well. Because I would like to point out that I'm paid about $30,000 less than any other department head in the city. And the last time you did a salary study, you based it on a classically underpaid position filled with women. And it's untenable. I have just now reached the salary that I asked for eight years ago. And at the time, council and administration asked me if I talked about it during the election season or anything else. And so, I've tried very hard to do so now. And I'm doing so tonight. So, that is what I'm looking for. Open for any questions. And I do have another appointment this evening, so I'll stick around for a little while and then I'll be leaving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you very much for sharing those priorities. Just a clarifying question with respect to the first item or two related to investment and training for staff and for elected officials and different departments, as well as ongoing education and training, specifically diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives in the first category. But I think there were sort of two distinct items you shared. Is that funding directly for the Clerk's office that you're anticipating, or do you mean as a priority generally for the city that would impact Clerk's office but be broader?
Oh.
Okay.
And for the city in general, I think it's important. I think there are programs available and ongoing learning, and staff doesn't always, isn't always able to avail themselves of that when they have a choice between one type of training or another. And they think, oh, well, this can wait. And I think that's a problem.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Clerk Bolden? Okay.
From anyone or just the?
From the council members I had focused on for now. But what is the will of the council? Do we wish to expand beyond?
No.
Okay. That would be no.
I feel differently with respect to this.
I'm sorry. What are we talking about before we go any further? Do we wish to expand on what?
Are we opening the agenda up to questions from the audience as opposed to questions from council members? I'm hearing one no. I'm hearing.
Unless there are, like, it's what capacity folks are handing in. So, if it's additional city staff who would like to engage, and the mayor's office would like that as well, then I would welcome that. But if it's in a different capacity, maybe there should be a specific time designated for public engagement. Does that make sense?
I'll go further and say that this has always been a preliminary meeting. It's meant to be treated like a committee. It's meant to be lower key. It's always been on a Tuesday. It's always been a little bit early to accommodate staff. There's nothing unusual about what we're doing here. And there are plenty of opportunities in the rest of the process for other kinds of input. But this was meant to give elected officials a chance to state their priorities. So, unless there's some burning issue that should otherwise change the way that we've always done our Tuesday 5:30 or 6:00 p.m. budget advances, I don't know why we should change policy here.
Okay. Additional comments? Councilmember Pete Motz Smith?
Well, I note that Clerk Bolden is an elected representative or, you know, reelected by the population. I feel like since while she is still here, it would be beneficial to have any questions that are directed or comments that are directed towards her or her office while she's still here. And I agree with Councilmember Bowlin that we've always done this. We've never had public comment. But that doesn't mean that we can't change and open it up a little more. So, anyway, I think the question was from Ms. Kidd, who's a staff member. Maybe it would be. I would be in favor of opening for that question.
Additional comments?
I would just say, we're here to listen. I don't know, Ms. Kidd, Dave, I don't know if you're -- the administration is here, happy to answer questions, but mostly to listen about your priorities, as we've done regularly, and happy to just mostly focus on your chance to tell us what you think about the budget.
And when you say that, Mayor, you mean the council selling you or discussing the priorities?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, I would agree with Steve.
Additional comments? Thank you. Jim? Sorry, Councilmember Jim.
That's okay. I'm Jim. You're informed, aren't I? And I agree with Councilmember Pete Motz Smith. However, in particular with the Clerk's comments and requests, and correct me if I'm wrong, that part of the budgeting for her office is a proposal from administration. Is that, am I correct there? Okay, so I would think it'd be more fruitful if we indicate, and I do indicate right now, that I think that needs to be adjusted upward, what her request is. To what level, I don't know. But I think it's more fruitful if that conversation was to happen there, and then we could fully consider it moving forward or change it as the case may be, because there's still time, like Councilmember Bowlin said, so.
Yeah.
But I do, if we need this, I support what she's saying. I just don't know to what level.
Okay. Circling back to the question, I'm inclined to agree with Councilmember Bowlin. The focus of this was for an opportunity for council to focus its questions. So, I would like to keep the focus there. There is opportunity for public comment certainly later on. And you're welcome to share thoughts or comments then, so. With that, okay, I want to thank Councilmember Pete Motz Smith for talking with me and sorting out what you see as the next series of categories on your agenda. When we initially talked about this, we essentially went from comments by the administration to comments from council as a whole. And that seemed a bit unwieldy and a bit unfocused. And so, what we've laid out here are just some very broad categories in which people may want to speak to their own priorities for the 2024 budget. These are not necessarily meant to be exhaustive. They are not meant to constrain so that we can only talk about transit in the context of transit, but not under climate action and sustainability. They're not meant to be constraining. They are just meant to lend a little bit of structure to our conversation tonight. Does that make sense? Councilmember Pete Motz Smith, have I left anything out? Okay. So, with that, would anyone like to begin with some overall vision comments for the 2024 budget? Councilmember Pete Motz Smith?
I mean, I think we need to look at our comprehensive plan. We need to look at our climate action plan and follow through in our transportation plan and follow through with the plans that have already been vetted by the public and have been adopted by the city.
Okay. Additional comments? Councilmember Flaherty.
Thanks. I agree. I look to our established city goals and plans to help guide priorities. I try to identify and think about gaps, things where we have goals stated or plans that we'd like to achieve, but we're falling short. And so, I'll get into some of those details later with respect to different categories. I think I agree with the overall sort of framework that the mayor's laid out in previous years and again this year about being an employer of choice. So, salaries, staffing, just general personnel, benefits, policies, sustainability and climate justice, as well as inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility in our community. So, those, I think, are good, broad categories. I think when we get into the details, that's where it's gonna, you know, we're gonna have probably differences of opinion and figure out what can be done. One or two more thoughts. One, I asked last year a number of times for kind of additional clarity with respect to revenue sources and where they go to, what they are limited, what limits there are with respect to their allocation. As you all know, many, many revenue sources have statutorily defined limits about what they can be spent on. And then we also have quite a few inter-fund transfers. So, things come into one area and get moved to a different area. So, my interest in that is that we've always historically taken a sort of fund-based approach to the budget. Here's what we expect to be in each of the funds. Here's what we're posing that gets allocated on. But I think that sort of makes less clear the whole picture. I think it's important for us to understand where the different revenue sources are, what they can be used for, and what funds they're feeding into, as well as, again, looking at fund transfers so that we have a deeper understanding of the whole budget process. I think we made some progress on that front last year. So, I need to get back into the details. It's been, you know, six months since we were talking about this last to sort of see what I thought worked well and where I maybe still have questions or additional requests for data or clarification. But I just wanted to mention that as a continued area of emphasis I think we need to work on. And then finally, I'm curious, next time we hear more from the mayor about his approach to budgeting this year, I was thinking about transition to a new mayor or administration in 2024 and what that means to this administration with respect to planning. Are there things you intend to approach differently because of that transition and some inherent uncertainty with respect to that? Obviously, quite soon, we'll actually know who the mayor-elect is, and that sure we can help with coordination. But I'm curious to know more about that. So, that's the other high-level item I wanted to share. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Additional comments? What else?
I'll just look at this broad categories and say out loud that I'd like to see that we do have a clarification on some of the fund balances. Sometimes it's a little hard to understand exactly where we're at with, you know, TIF, creed, ARPA, whatever else we have out there. And that, in a preliminary sense, I'd like, I would like to understand that before we kind of keep getting farther down the road. In public safety, I think, I would say to the administration that just that we look at how we're doing, if we're making, you know, some progress in that area. And the budget can then reflect whether we need to be more concerned about that, add more funds. Transit, I think, is, we're going in the right direction, I think.
Point of origin, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Aren't we just on the overall vision right now?
Then we'll get to the other ones.
So, sorry. I was like writing myself notes when everybody was talking.
Anything else on overall vision? We're gonna do deeper dives into each of these.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay.
Jim didn't, Jim didn't hit me. He didn't tell me.
Councilmember Sims, please leave.
You need to sit next to me, so.
You get no love, I tell you.
Okay.
But additional comments?
Well, thank you. Sorry about that.
On overall vision?
I would just like to echo what Isabel said. I'd also like to ask a question. Are we saying first names tonight or not? And?
I think we should be consistent.
I agree.
But this is meant to be relaxed.
Right, so just tell me what to do.
That's my, I just spit out my thoughts, Jim.
Why don't we stay with first names?
You won't just spit your thoughts.
All right, neat. We're gonna shave off five minutes tonight, all right? I just want to echo what Isabel said, that I am very interested in following our plans and prioritizing what our plans say we should prioritize. That's, that is, that's it for me on that one.
Okay. We've got deeper dives coming up, so. Additional overall vision statements? Okay, let's dive in. Public safety. Councilmember Pete Motz Smith? Isabel, sorry.
Well, I think that we need to take a serious look at firefighter salaries and the staff losses in the fire department to other departments after they're well-trained here in Bloomington. I think that's becoming a more serious issue, and the possibility of opening negotiations early on the fire contract should be well-considered. And that would, that would have to be before we get the mayor's budget proposal, because the budget proposal would have to have those increases reflected.
Other items on public safety? Councilmember Steve.
Can I just ask Isabel to follow up? Are you saying that the administration needs to sort of put a, an extra chunk of money even though, I mean, like, in other words, they can't be specific because they haven't negotiated something new, but that there should be extra money so that it could be funded if they come to an agreement? Is that your idea? Because it seems premature.
I feel that the administration ought to open negotiations as soon as possible. And the sooner that negotiations can be opened, and I know it's a year early, the sooner we might have an agreement. And, but as always, you know, if the agreement were up this year, we might be short of all the data we need at budget time also. But, you know, the sooner it's open, the better.
The reason I ask is because we are capable of, of, I mean, the administration can bring an appropriation ordinance if and when they come, I mean, they could bring it anytime. They could bring it next month if they wanted to. They don't have to do it as a part of the budget. And so, like, if you're saying that your priority is that the, your vote on a budget is contingent on a new agreement, that's something I just wanted to be clarified, because I'm not averse to it, but I, I think that an appropriation can come any time. If there's a breakthrough, it doesn't have to wait to the budget process.
I guess what I'm saying to the mayor is I do not understand the reasons for not opening the negotiations, and I'm very concerned about fire staffing. So, let's talk. You may or may not be able to convince me that your course, current course is correct. I would like to further investigate and to be determined whether this becomes a breaking point for my vote.
Thanks. Additional comments? Not I have a couple. I'll jump in. Just a commentary in general that I think, certainly I, and I'm guessing many of us, will be watching closely as the new Public Safety Headquarters comes together. Let us do everything we can do not to give that short shrift. We have planned. We have, we have taken something of a leap of faith that that site will work. Let us not give that short shrift in, when we do our, when we make that fit for the new, the new occupants, so. The other item, a couple of items I wanted to bring up actually go back to the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission Town Hall that was held a few weeks ago. Isabel and I were part of that. I'm trying to think. And Jim was part of that. That's right. One of the themes that came out in our discussion, and maybe you had others in your breakout, focused on the need for increased communication around public safety processes. So, in other words, what happens when you call 911? What happens when you call 988? What are the backup plans when, when preferred responders are not available? So, perhaps some resources could be dedicated to increased communication around that. Not just staffing, I'll get to that in a second, but to additional communications and resident education around that. So, I would encourage us to think about that and how that might be worked into next year's budget. I also think that we may want to do what we can to consider expanding the hours that we have downtown resource officers, that we have an after, the days of the week in which we have an after-hours ambassador. I've heard in the CAPS Commission Town Hall and a couple of other settings about the need for more hours of available responses from the city. And so, I would like to see the city consider that at some point. Additional comments on public safety? Yeah, Jim?
Thank you. I think it's gonna take a while for us to get fully staffed, in both police and fire, I mean, let's just face it. I'm gonna focus more on police. I think one of the things that we've cultivated over the last couple of years is the use of our non-sworn officers and staff. So, I'd really like to hear progress of what we have, if that makes sense, plans going into the future, because I think there's plans, or I hope there's plans, to increase those non-sworn officer positions. And lastly, I think it's, I think it's gonna be important that how they function, how efficient and effective they are can have some effect on the number of badged officers that we need, at least until we're fully, you know, at least where we're budgeted. So, and I think, I think there's a learning opportunity here while we're struggling to get to this point. Let's see what we can do here. And then, once we get up here, I think that'll be better overall. I won't say kind of some of the things I think could happen from this, but I think we all might be surprised at what we can do when we manipulate those numbers. I almost said manipulate those numbers, but adjust, adjust those numbers, I think is a better term. And basically, that it. I mean, there's DEI and a bunch of other stuff. It's hard to separate public safety from a lot of stuff. It's hard to extricate it. But at least for that part, I'll leave it at that.
Thanks. Other comments? Matt?
I'll just agree with Jim that I would encourage continued creative and forward-thinking approaches with respect to the whole suite of public safety as inclusive of policing and fire, but also broader than that. I think that's generally the approach the mayor's tried to take. And I appreciate that. So, just voicing support for continued emphasis and focus there with respect to staffing and personnel issues. I'll save that for the other category that has that. Thanks.
Great.
I'd like to, oh, it's okay. Oh, I just, I'm gonna agree with the general tenor of what we're talking about here. The one thing also that I was thinking when we do these budgets and put it, put them together, so if, if the budget, if, say, whoever in public safety, fire or police, if they have some new programs that are really, you know, bold initiatives to be, keep us safer, to be more inclusive, et cetera, et cetera, it'd be really great if, if we had, I want to say, a line item dedicated to that. And I don't know if that's always how it's constructed in budgets. I know it can be or cannot be. But those kind of things, it shows then what our values are. And so, I think that would be really great if we could say, here's, here's the proposed budget. And it makes it clear to me that here's what we're doing for those issues, and here's how much money we're gonna put forward to it. And, and even if that's the first time it's done, then maybe next time that leads us for future things to continue to do that. And I like to see that in budgets. It helps me think about, instead of broad categories, it helps me think about, these are things we're dedicating funds for, and we want those things to happen. So, so some more specificity in some of the things that are important to us.
Okay, Kate, thanks.
I would, this is more of just data finding that I would like to see. So, I, my question is about if someone calls any number, 911, 988, and they say, like, this is a domestic dispute, who gets sent out? this is a domestic dispute, who gets sent out? So, like, what is that process? Is it sworn officers or their domestic violence specialists that go, like, I would like to see sort of our response teams to different scenarios, right? If someone's sleeping in a park, who gets sent out if somebody calls 911 there? If that's possible.
Steve?
I want to piggyback on Ron's comment. I think that in general, I like the, what he's suggesting about better being able to track certain initiatives through the budget. I know that the reason why I am still a proponent of the local income tax we passed last year is because the priorities that we set for it are continuing to be observed. Like, we know that dollars are going to be satisfied as we imagined them that year, even though they didn't necessarily have to be. So, the trust between, I mean, because the council, you know, only has limited authority over the budget, it's a very important signal of trust when, you know, like, the budget is broken down in that way, and that we can trust that if we vote for something this year outside of a bond where we're obligated for 20 years, that we know that the priority will continue, we don't have to chase it. So, you know, like, from an overall budget perspective, that's always been a challenge for council members, is to track the various priorities that we often talk about. And so, what Ron just said is, you know, like, yes, I agree. And I want to see that sort of thing broken down, and there's a couple of points I'll be addressing in later agenda items there. I mean, that actually goes for the clerk's budget, too. Like, you know, the clerk, I think that part of the reason that not enough people understand the job that she does is that we just sort of lump it all into the clerk's budget, and maybe if we could, if you could sort of break down your budget a little bit to show us, I mean, like a program budget, I think you do that already. Where are you, well, there you go, just like, you know, to better explain, you know, like the things, because that's the other thing, too, is, and this isn't really public safety-related, so maybe I'll bring it up under employees and staffing, but I know you have to go soon. So, I would just say that since she has to go soon, that I think that the clerk, you know, I still believe that boards and commissions are the kind of thing that, there's a huge clerical task involved with management that the clerk already does, and that I think the departments would be better served if more of that work was factored out to the clerk, the tasks of scheduling and tracking and even supporting boards and commissions. The problem with that is the office would need funding to do it. Like, there's no question that it's, it's a labor-intensive task. It's just that I think that we could subtract a few hours from every department that is currently having to reinvent the wheel every time to manage the one or two commissions that they oversee when the work is the same and it can all be done in an office that's very good at managing logistics, you know, the literal office of the clerk. So, I certainly don't want to give the clerk's office any more work without ensuring that it's funded, but that's all the more reason why, if we can break down how much these sort of things cost, it might make it easier for everyone to track, understand, and appreciate the work that needs to get done.
And vote, and vote yes for it.
And vote yes for it.
Yep.
Vote yes for it.
Like, if it, if we see.
Initiatives.
If we see all the initiatives and that's, then it.
Yeah.
Then we don't, aren't so caught up in, is this, because it's a pot of money, if it's specific, it's, for me, it's easier for me to understand.
I mean, I'll just say one more thing, that the line items that came with the local income tax that we raised last year was the model for what we should be doing. Like, you know, we could be more specific in that way so that everyone, starting with council members, can more easily track the various initiatives. I mean, the administration's doing dozens, hundreds of initiatives. You know, somehow we need to, as council, rock them all, pay attention to them. So, anything we can do to break it down and make the budget less complicated is good for everyone.
Other items on public safety?
Sorry about that.
No, because I actually want to come back to that point in a second. So, what's a good way to do that? We had a great spreadsheet with the ED Lit, I think, and I agree with you. I think it would be nice to say, all right, of the things we hope to accomplish with transit, what have we done so far?
Well, now, we're talking about city services and employee staffing. I'm happy to do that.
I'm talking broadly. Is there, is there a time, is there a time of the year that we need to do that? Is that a mid-year check-in on budget? Is that?
No, I think it's a budget thing. It's just that the way, I mean, I'm not averse to talking about different ways to think about how we do the budget, starting with how we should do the budget advance. I don't necessarily want to do it during the budget advance, like, we can plan that in the committee for council processes, but the, it started when we went back to program budgets. For many years, we didn't actually have program. In the Hampton administration, we asked for it, and the administration brought back budgets that began to break down. So, now, when a department head presents, they talk about some of the different initiatives they do and what FTEs it takes. That was a big help. That helped us understand what departments were doing, you know, and why they were doing it. They weren't just giving us a big lump sum, well, we need this, and we have this many FTEs. Okay? So, you might want to call these sub-program budgets, where we're following initiatives that maybe cross programs in a department, but it's whatever priorities council members have. If we're trying to track an initiative, we should be able to do it relatively effortlessly. If we need to rebuild the way that we build the budget book in order to make it easier to read, I'm all for it, and I'm happy to sit in on anybody who'd like to talk about the design of the budget, because I think that's what Ron was talking about in the first place, is how we design the budget to better follow.
Yeah, for sure.
The details.
The budgets, you can construct them that way with subcategories, yeah, subprograms, and it makes it so much easier for me to understand. And I know it's, I know it's a lot of, there's a lot of lines already in the budget. I get, I get that.
Add a few more.
Jeff will go running out of the building.
Anything else along these lines or public safety? If not, let's go to housing. Kate?
I have some things. I would like to look at what it would cost to regulate to the best of our ability from what the state allows Airbnbs, mostly full-time Airbnbs. So, I think that would be certifying them and charging or having a registration fee and then potentially adding them to our rental inspection program. So, I think we have somewhere between 500 and 750 Airbnbs in Bloomington, and that work would, of course, add a lot of hours to city staff, so like, what that might look like numbers-wise for the budget.
Matt?
First of all, just briefly, voice support for Airbnb regulation. I mean, it's the rental housing, they should be inspected, made sure to be safe, just like any rental housing in our community. But I have more questions specific to the Housing Development Fund. I know we've got a dedicated funding stream going to that now, thanks to the ED Lit, and would like to know just a bit more about plans for that fund in the coming year or years, how it's, you know, been used in the last year, and thinking about any shifts or changes that would be needed to target strategic interventions toward gaps exist in our community between the housing authority and social service providers and other, other aspects of our housing system. So, some of that, thinking about, like, we got an update last night, some of the council members did, about the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund, for instance, and its use, including, I think they're using it for maybe zero-interest, like, loans for deposit assistance and small tranche money for that. So, wanting to make sure that those things are well-supported, some of these newer initiatives, same thing with the Summit Hill Community Housing Trust, exactly what it's called, making sure that we're, that if those things are being drawn down in some way, you know, that we're able to replenish them. And I don't think it would be a whole lot. Those are meant to be sort of somewhat self-sustaining funds, but just getting a good update on some of those newer initiatives, where we are with them, if they need ongoing support. So, that, some of that might extend a little beyond the Housing Development Fund, but yeah, those are my interests.
Yes and yes. Thank you. Yes, Steve?
I've been thinking about this for a while, but I think that we've been looking at the, where we can use funds to apply to get something built, but I also think that we have a set of assets that isn't cash to spend, but rather, you know, assets that we can forego. This is the idea behind a tax abatement. To what extent can we use tax abatements to see more housing built that is not market rate? I mean, we've heard a lot of people talking about the only housing that's going up is other market rate or for extremely affordable housing, and that there's, you know, a big gap in between. But I started thinking of it as living rent housing. We're looking for people to pay living wage, but people can't find a rent they can live with, they're paying more than 30% of their housing. But we have these assets, not just that we can forego taxes to incentivize that building, but that there are certain kinds of landholders in our community that have potentially developable land for this kind of housing that's not, I mean, let's call them all housing projects, but housing projects for every different kind of tenant. Can we work with schools who have large pots of land to build housing for teachers and staffs, so they don't have to commute from outside the county? Can we work with churches to build senior housing on their often vast expanses of green that otherwise are, you know, not necessarily in use? Can we work with, I mean, the school system is particularly interesting to me. Can we work with IU, although they're tax-free, to get them to build housing for their staff so that people don't have to commute in from out of the county? Can we, even better would be the landbanks that are parking lots. Can we incentivize Eastland Plaza to build housing on this vast swath of heat-increasing parking? Can we work with College Mall? What incentives would it take to get them to build, we talked about this with the Catalent tax abatement last year, I suggested the idea, can we get somebody to build on top of that parking? It's the lowest and worst form of land use, and we know we need housing. So, if we can use strategic tax abatement to incentivize this kind of housing, I think it would be a far greater source of potential dollars that we could put to it by not collecting it in the first place than any amount of dollars we could hope to raise. So, again, entities like schools, churches, large businesses with large parking lots. We need not just housing everywhere, but housing that's affordable in ways that maybe forego the ownership of land, I mean, it doesn't have to be single-family. It could be a condo. We'd have to, to develop model legislation for HOA fees to prevent multiple ownership, ownership of multiple units by one owner, to ensure that that housing is kept to be ownable by individuals. But that's doable, it's very doable, and especially if we make it city code that your HOA has to follow a certain set of rules. These all contribute to the house, the enormous problem we have with housing, without necessarily burning through what few dollars that we actually have to spend. So, I don't have much more developed thought than that. I just know that those are assets that we could be tapping, and while I know this administration won't be around for very long, they could set some interesting standards that we could follow in the future. So, I mean, I would love to talk about that some more.
Other thoughts on housing? Isabel?
This isn't directly related to the budget, but it's a request for more communications. When there are large developments going on, even before they come to Plan Commission, I know that developers discuss with city staff what their plans are, and, for example, the Sudbury property and the PUD revisions that, or the PUD that might be pursued there. These are all very important elements as the city grows, and I would, I think that the council should be included earlier on in the vision for such large housing developments and how they can be, you know, incentivized to be affordable or to include affordable housing. Because a lot of that happens before we ever hear about it. And as a representative of the community, especially those of us who represent the district where this housing takes, you know, is built, I think the council should be brought on board a little sooner.
Housing, going once, going twice? Yeah, please.
I think the administration talked about turning a city lot into affordable housing, one of the three lots. So, any new information on that or plans for that to be in the budget? And I think there are a lot of people talking about a tiny home or single-room occupancy pilot that potentially the city could help with or work on, and I guess I would like to learn a little bit about the feasibility of something like that for people without homes.
Anything else on housing? Yeah, Jim?
Thank you. I do like the comments of my colleagues. Thank you very much. Couple of things. I want to hear more about CDFI-friendly with regard to potentially financing housing. And I know it was, well, I don't know why, well, I do know why it was created, mainly to help facilitate business development, if I'm not mistaken. So, I'd like to hear more about that and how we might can invest there, maybe seek partner investment in order to facilitate some of our housing finance needs in that regard. Do I understand that IU has capped their enrollment? That's not true, is that just a rumor I heard?
It's a persistent rumor.
Oh, okay. No, I just heard that, so I don't know. But the point I'm making is that I think somewhere along the line, we, there needs to be a hard conversation started with Indiana University along the lines of student housing or housing their residents, their students. Now, I'm not saying build 45,000 rooms, I'm not saying that, because we obviously have student housing, we've zoned for that, we've planned for that, we've allowed for that growth. But I still, it seems like we're not getting any help outside of the 16,000 or 17,000 that they house already and leave the rest for us, and that's, so I just think there needs to be some conversations there, see what we can do. You don't get some stuff unless you ask, and in some cases, you might demand, but I know that's a hard conversation. And lastly, it's interesting to hear about using other property for certain housing, and that's good ideas. I want to include all housing types, and I think that's what we meant when we said that. We'll say affordable housing, and that's part of it, but there's other affordable or other housing types that may not necessarily be affordable housing, but I like to coin it as housing that's affordable, somewhere along the line. So, we'll have to get a little bit creative, shared wall things or whatever, that there's some ownership built in. But as I say, you know, insanity is keep doing the same things you've always done and getting the same results. So, let's be creative and think about that, and it's going to take some funding. Lastly, I'll say about that, we can talk about funding all night and increasing here or there. Think about the flip side all. If there's going to be some priorities we increase here, then what are you willing to decrease? Possibly, possibly, that that's going to be an interesting conversation, I think. So, thank you.
Go ahead, rain on the parade.
I'm a realist.
Housing?
Or a bullionist, I should say.
What did you say? What did you say?
Or a bollanist, I should say.
Before you set sail, I would love it if there was some really bold initiative on housing that would come through on the budget that would be just this fantastic, wonderful thing that would really show how great, you know, we can do this in Bloomington. And I'm well aware of a lot of difficulties, I've talked to a couple of developers and people in the last month about market rate is really tough, it's really tough to get that happening, with developers looking at, can they make money? Then Steve actually last night mentioned, do we have bankers that can do that? And do they want to do that? And the answer that I had heard from the developers was, well, it's really, really hard to make it make money, so the answer is, it, sometimes those numbers don't work. So the wonderful thing, I know that when you first came into office, you were talking about different housing things, and the financiers of a lot of the affordable housing, there's, there's not that many that seem to, it's not that easy, and I get that. But I wonder if there's any bold ideas that could come from our, through our budget that says, let's do this and see if we can spur more of the financiers who do the affordable housing to come to Bloomington to do some more of those projects here. The one over by Switchyard Park is still kind of like, it was slowed down and it's not hap, hasn't happened yet, right? The way we're going to build those apartments right there at Switchyard?
On the west side of Eight?
Oh, no. We ran into the construction.
Or retreat at Switchyard.
Yeah, where they ran into the construction problems and things over by the, I mean...
They're going to finish, but...
Yeah, and that was one of the groups that was a specialty of affordable housing. I wonder if there's any way we can set an incentive through the budget that asks more of that activity to happen? And I don't know the answer, I'm not, I don't have it in my head that this is what it would take, but it would be really great, you know, it would feel really, really great to most of us to just say, we're going to vote for that, because we really do want that, because it's a problem in our, in our community.
If I can jump in here, because Ron mentioned something I said yesterday, to sharpen what he said, I was specifically concerned about developers saying that they have trouble getting anything financed that isn't market rate rental. And so is there something that the city can do, or the CDFI can do, to help make it easier for financiers to say yes to the development that we all say that we want? And that's what I was saying last night at that, that heading home event, was in particular, it sounds like we've all sort of underestimated the quiet role that financiers play, that bankers play. I think someone mentioned to me last night that it's the large out-of-town banks that don't get it as much, there are quite a few local banks that do get it and that do finance projects. Is there some way that we can, with the power of the city, help reduce the queasiness that finding, financiers have in financing the kind of housing that we all say we want, which is everything but market rate rental? So, I mean, just, but in general, I'm agreeing with what Ron said again, that, I mean, I don't really, to this day, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I don't quite understand the CDFI and what it does, if it's focusing on business, that's fine, but I'd love it if it could also focus on housing somehow.
It's mostly housing so far.
Is it?
Right, and $23 million of new financing.
I just, I just, maybe I need another presentation on it, yeah. Thank you.
Housing?
And it's just a comment, and these are, again, great ideas, but in talking with our constituents, one thing I want us to really be cautious about, the city cannot do everything in the need of housing, so that's why I like to talk of facilitation, what can we do to make some things easier? It's tough for these, these housing, or affordable housing credits, tax credits, I mean, that's, that's not easy to do, and having a developer that's willing to even try to do that. But I just don't want, you know, we've got a problem, obviously, but I don't want someone up, you know, downtown on the courthouse square saying, it's all the city, you know, because I think we're doing a whole lot of things we can do better, but understand we can't do it, the city, unless you decide what you want to reduce, and then we can do all that. Okay, thank you.
Matt?
I just want to add a point, I'm not sure how we have a budget implication that's necessarily to have, it probably depends on the mechanism, but finding a way to overcome the market barriers to modest homeownership opportunities in multifamily housing, specifically small scale condos, my understanding from, I forget who first communicated this to me, but a large percentage of the units have to be sold before you can get financing, I think, in most cases. So whatever, whether it's the CDFI, whether it's using city-owned land or city-purchased land, and using that as the leverage for when you sell it to a developer, perhaps slightly below market rate, to get that type of housing, that seems to be something the market is just largely failing to provide entirely, small attached housing, townhomes, that sort of thing, possibly with new sort of greenfield development, but very, very little infill in that category. And I think that's a major missed opportunity, and we need to figure out what tweaks the city can make to shift the incentives or use the leverage we have to address that need. And so again, I'm not, I think there are a variety of possible policy options, some may have budget implications, but we've kind of been on this topic, so.
How are you all doing? I see at least pages and pages of notes. Change.
Several of us, we're getting every...
Learn you're right, left-handed before this is over.
They've got a whole staff, a managerial staff.
Plus, they can relive this meeting as many times as they want. Housing? Okay, transit. Nah, don't do anything. Oh, sorry, Steve?
I'm going to, I'm going to say it again, for a variety of reasons, I am working on a resolution right now that will allow us to discuss the prospect of a downtown circulator, an idea that's been floating for 15 years, I've done a lot of the floating, but it's not unpopular. It is, it serves a lot of different functions, not the least of which is the question of the Convention Center. I like to point out, again, that from the Trades District to the Kroger Seminary Square to Sample Gates, each of those points of the triangle is a 20-minute walk. That's how big our downtown has become, and most people look for an alternate way to get around after a 10-minute walk. So if we don't want people moving their cars around to get places that should be in a compact place, not the least of whom would be potential visitors to the community who are coming to any number of events at this much anticipated Convention Center expansion, I think that we can establish the capital costs without any help at all from creed money, $4 million to be exact. I haven't even looked into the possibility of how we could spend fewer dollars than that by leveraging federal transit money, because they generally tend to do a, what is it, 80/20 match? We would need three buses to do the minimum service of the circulator. If we could get it to be at, that would be with a 15 to 20-minute frequency, if we could get it to half that, if we get it to be 10 minutes or less, where you know that there's always a shuttle coming, it would transform the downtown. If it connected every parking garage, every parking facility, every low-cost opportunity to park, and discourage people from, I mean, there is a great deal of traffic generated downtown in the afternoons and evenings from people cruising for parking, even at a dollar an hour, we're not charging enough. And I believe that the future way to fund the operations of that shuttle would be to adjust parking rates. There are some streets that are undercharged, and they're still in such demand that nobody can park, and there are lots of streets that are way overcharged. Exhibit A is the land on South, the parking spots on South College in front of the Convention Center, which the Parking Commission reports will show are used at 3% of their capacity. We, why are we charging a dollar an hour there? We should be charging a quarter an hour. But when you adjust the rates to match the market, that, and if all that money is going into a visible sign of the services the city is providing, your parking dollars are going to fund this convenient shuttle that takes you all over downtown, not only will there not be quotes, but it's the kind of thing that everyone will praise. So for all the different reasons that, I mean, I know that in talking about the Convention Center, that IU is a, going to, is very much looking forward to the development of a Convention Center, because they don't really, one of the space they don't have on campus is a space to handle large conferences. They would like to partner with the city in bringing conferences that would provide a boost to downtown. I think that in that way, they, they know that the city can be an asset to the things that they're trying to do. And a shuttle that connects the Sample Gates or the IMU Hotel with the Courthouse Square, the Kroger, the Hopewell Parking Garage, the Trades District, the Trades District Parking Garage, and every point in between, including City Hall, Monroe County Courthouse, that's an idea whose time has come, and it, we should be thinking about it the same way we thought about the Trades District Garage. We built it in anticipation of future use. This is the same thing, but it would be used immediately already, I mean, we would see the uptake in it right away. So I want to push very strongly for it, I believe that it could be done entirely with creed funds, but if we can get an 80/20 matching grant from the FTA, those funds could conceivably, I mean, I know the money could be there to fund 15 to 20-minute frequency, I think it would be, the real lift would be getting to twice that frequency. I don't, even I don't think that's doable right away, but we should be striving for it. So I want to put a pitch in for this, a free downtown trolley that will not only provide all these services, but will give choice riders a reason to choose to use transit and to become advocates for public transit and not just complain about how it seems to be for other people, but not, not them. Everyone will have a reason to use a free downtown trolley. So that's my transit pitch, number one.
We'll come back for two.
Maybe.
What else on transit?
I would like to weigh in on the circulator and say, another potential idea for that could be to increase the frequency of our buses that already go on downtown routes, and so what that might look like, I know it's, I mean, it is different than exactly what Steve is talking about, but our buses that go down Kirkwood and College and Walnut, if we increase those to something like every 10 minutes, so they serve folks outside of downtown as well, like what would that look like? Sort of like circulator timing, but on our own bus lines. Is this about transit and transportation, or just transit, this topic? Okay, I'm going to call it transportation. I would like to think about some things that Devta presented at council last week, so with her, the sidewalk studies and with folks talking about what could be possible. Something she said that came up in all of the sessions that got a low rating because of how expensive it is, is having the city maintain some of its sidewalks, so fixing the cracks and the walkability and accessibility of those sidewalks, and also keeping them plowed in the wintertime. So I think trying to do some kind of pilot sidewalk maintenance study in 2024 would be great. Public Works said they were going to be doing that this past year, but I don't, I don't think that happened or that it was really tracked or reported. We'll stop there.
Okay. Matt, did you?
Saving most of my transportation comments for the infrastructure section.
Okay. Isabel, Jim, Ron?
I think what they, really, the big increase in transit funds, I think we're really moving in the right direction. I would, I would think that circulator is a really, really interesting idea, I don't, I don't know how to fold that in with the Bloomington Transit Corporation at all, but I think we're going in the right direction, and I, and I just think that as far as the budget reflection, just we're keeping, keeping that more robust funding there with perhaps a light item for a circulator, so that we then can track it and see what's going on. That's all, that's about all I have.
Steve?
I can say a couple things to clarify with the circulator. Number one, it will be run by Bloomington Transit, the estimates that I have are from Bloomington Transit, appreciate the administration making them available to spec it. Secondly, another idea behind the idea of a circulator, I mean, we used to have one, it was the number eight Eastside Local. We have a precedent for buses that go in a loop instead of just point-to-point, but if you were to put a circulator downtown, it would expand the hub that right now, all the buses have to meet at the Transit Center. Well, that doesn't have to be the case, some buses could touch, could stop at the Trades District, knowing that somebody could get a ride downtown on the shuttle that runs every 15 minutes, or get across town. It would actually allow the other routes to concentrate if we had them connect to the circulator route, instead of having to always connect at the main point. So there's a lot of potential advantages to, to taking the idea of the Eastside Local, which I'd always, always been indignant about, it's like, why is there one over there, but not one downtown? And having it downtown, the only, the thing that's different here is the source of funding for it, for the establishment of the route, the capital startup costs can come from this fund that was supposed to serve, that was collected from taxes paid by downtown businesses, and it would serve downtown businesses, it would serve the area where the money was collected. So it just, it seems like a very neat solution to a lot of different problems, some of which we didn't even think about until the idea was implemented.
Isabel?
So just in terms of, I like the circulator idea, I think it should be studied more closely and get some more details going, but I, since we are giving $3.8 million to transit this year, and hopefully many years into the future, thanks to the ED Lit, and thank you to the administration for doing that, since we're doing that, I think the council should have a more thorough report from transit on how they're using that money. Like Ron was saying, if that could be separated out in their budget proposal and say, you know, we use the city's money for X, Y, and Z, so we can follow through on our, you know, what we saw during the ED Lit discussions as far as an East-West Express Route, Sunday service, more frequent service, things like that.
Anything else on transit? Jim?
There's been some changes with some funding and my colleagues, and adding buses, getting more electric buses, these sorts of things. I like the circulator idea, I don't know how exhaustive and all that we're talking, but I think our main, biggest area of growth there is, across the city, is probably going to be frequency, frequency of service, and see what we can do to maybe, I don't know what financing can do with that, or, I mean, we've got a good system, but a lot of the folks I talk with are not going to wait that long, when they, when they have a car as a choice, you see, and some will, some might, but if we can increase frequency, I think that will go a long way from that inconvenience and people maybe getting higher usage out of that. I mean, I think we're doing some good things. I came downtown Sunday, we don't use, there's no parking on, on Sunday, or fees, so people utilize that, and for me to... And for me to get to a restaurant and utilize some services, probably took me twenty minutes to find a parking spot. So, I figured some of my colleagues would love hearing that. But, but, but that'll work itself out. But I think more frequency, and that's just downtown, but I'm talking about the entire city. I, I'm concerned about downtown, but I'm concerned about the entire city and how do we get from place to place? And, and I think we're doing good. I think we've made some really good moves along that line. So, I'd like to see that continued and see what we can do to enhance some things.
Anything else on trans? Location, 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 frequency, frequency, frequency. There, that's fine.
Add another frequency.
One more frequency. Infrastructure.
Can we define this term?
Matt?
Infrastructure is whatever you want it to be. First, just following up on some of Kate's comments about accessibility in the, in the transportation context, sidewalk system. Public Works did some really good work in, in my neighborhood, I think it was this year, this past year, doing a lot of this sort of shaving of sidewalk edges, and I forget what they call that, because, you know, when, yeah, when you've got the trees, they kind of branch up sidewalk. And so, like that, you know, is before, probably a five-block by six-block stretch or something that I've noticed that all kind of happened at the same time. And, you know, making sure that, that we're, that's really great work, and I, and I want to make sure that that's funded adequately to, to get to what's needed there at a, a reasonable timeframe from a systems, the whole, the whole systems perspective. I don't know, some of the analysis we've had of like sidewalk conditions can help with that, but I think it's important. A number of accessibility-related things, the infrastructure category, that I think we just, we still have a ways to go. So, related to that, possible, possible funding or investment, or at least a plan for signal, traffic signal upgrade costs, in particular, I'm thinking about the, how pedestrians interact with, with those. So, I know we have quite a few signals, for instance, that don't have, that aren't accessible, that don't have an audible signal for folks who are, who are vision impaired. I think there's a study happening now with respect to some of those signal updates, the possible investment or, or support for addressing the, the biggest gaps or problems in that. Similarly, we've got some really great newer examples of using leading pedestrian intervals, which can significantly increase safety for pedestrians at intersections. Third and Indiana is a good example. I think a lot of our signals are probably capable of that, but are not currently programmed to do that. But it's also possible there are technology gaps with respect to the, the signal infrastructure itself. That's for you.
Why don't you write in the infrastructure?
Yeah. So, anyway, that's, that's, that's another area of, of interest. The big one for me, and I've been trying to get a better handle on this and, you know, ask questions about this last budget cycle, is, is deepening our, our understanding of the full universe of pedestrian infrastructure, sidewalks in particular, understanding where, where they are now, what the condition is, where they're needed, where we expect they should go, but they're not presently there, as well as areas that we think it's just really not practical to add a sidewalk to. There are not, you know, not every street necessarily needs a sidewalk if it's a calm enough street to be safe for all users without that. And I know we're talking about, you know, tens of millions of dollars, if not literal hundreds of millions of dollars of investment to get where we'd like to be, but we haven't really gotten a full systems-level analysis of that problem. But I think probably everyone can agree that sidewalks are pretty chronically underfunded and there's, you know, bonding and capital expenditures that could go to that, in fact, already do. But I think it's also true that we probably need annual funding going to sidewalks that is quite a bit higher than we have now. In particular, the, the council sidewalk budget, that portion of the side, that the sidewalk committee allocates, has been around three hundred thousand dollars, give or take, for a decade or more. Prices are probably twice as high in terms of installed sidewalk costs as they, as they were when, when the funding for that wasn't much different. And I'm not particularly wed to the council, you know, controlling that fund or dictating its use necessarily, but I do think we need probably something on the order of two to three million annually going to, to sidewalk repair, maintenance, and installation and meeting critical gaps. Related to that, possible minor funding impact is request for temporary measures to support protected bike lane infrastructure, where we have plans to develop and, and fully implement a, a, you know, design solution like the Seven Line, or like other protected bike lanes that are in the works now, I think with respect to Second Street update with Hopewell, for instance. It takes a while to, to build those all out, but, but at the same time, we know that there are tactical measures or temporary measures that can provide significant safety increases. Every, every time I travel, I'm struck by what other cities are doing on this front. I was in Boston not long ago, also Washington DC. Ubiquitous in those cities is temporary infrastructure to, you know, to hold us over with, with respect to protecting our, our roadway users who are more vulnerable until they can get that, you know, harder infrastructure installed and a full design. So, I think we need to, I've been talking to Andrew Seabor about this for probably the better part of a year, about the need to probably install and, and implement something like that. And, and, you know, don't need to remind anybody who's had too far, too many folks die on our streets, including in instances where protected, temporary protected bike lane infrastructure probably would have been protective in some way. So, you know, I don't know, I haven't, I've gotten funding estimates from him yet, but we're actually meeting tomorrow to talk about it. So, that's another area for me. I don't think that'll be as big of a, of a funding need, but, but it'll cost something. So, those are, I think, my major concerns and interests with respect to infrastructure.
Isabel?
We've said this repeatedly in the last few years, and we did include some sidewalks in the bonds that were passed last year, but I would like to see new bonds for sidewalks.
Steve?
This is a pale comparison to the, those two, but in the course of thinking about sidewalks, I've been working with Michael Schermus and with Deb Meyerson on bringing to council a resolution, adopting accessible transportation or mobility principles. And the idea behind it is basically to involve people with disabilities in the key decisions where infrastructure gets constructed. I don't think it's going to be a huge consideration for the budget, but I do think that if we adopt those principles and if the city collectively embraces more tightly the idea that, that we involve people with especially transportation disabilities, low vision, wheelchair, and other people who have difficulty accessing the right-of-way, that it might require a little, a few extra staff hours in Michael's department. I mean, as the, with the Retirement Department McKinney, the, we reorganized, the administration reorganized how human rights are managed, but I already can anticipate that the task of permitting, approving, and building public infrastructure is complicated enough that there's gonna be, there might be an extra need to, to fund a few hours to help the people who need to be involved in the process navigate that process. So, maybe a quarter or half-time additional equivalent of hours in, is it Community and Family Resources for that particular purpose? Of course, the resolution has to come forward. I think we're gonna have something ready as soon as the middle end of May, so maybe we can adopt it in June, but it, that depends on council, so.
On infrastructure, the thing that pops into my head is, is there, how does that relate? So, traffic congestion, et cetera, certainly relates to infrastructure. Yeah? I mean, is there any, anything, I'm just gonna, you know, ask everybody out loud, is, you know, is there anything related to budget initiatives that we could ask for that might help us figure out how to alleviate? And I know we're doing a lot of things, you know, in a prolifer, peripheral sense, the traffic congestion that, I hear about it all the time. I don't know if you all are hearing about it all the time. I hear about it all the time, that, you know, Third Street and, you know, and then, and I, when I drive into town, and we all experience it. So, I, I don't know if there's a, we need, do we need a study that's done that will look at traffic flow, you know, through our city and do the roads need to be, the infrastructure need to be changed in some directional sense? You know, like if people are coming from Nashville into Bloomington, do, is there, do, do we need to figure out a way to not get them to go down, straight downtown or? And I'm not a traffic person, I, it's not my expertise, I don't know that much about it, but I just wonder, because as we keep growing, it's, and there's more, you know, apartments being built and, and all, it seems like it's, the, that congestion, it seems like maybe that would be another thing that we need to look at. Like, how do we even wrap our heads around that? I, I don't know. I'm not really sure. So, if there was, I guess, a, an initiative that said from, through the budget that said, we want to fund a study that tells us how to, and hire, you know, experts at it, how to alleviate the traffic congestion that goes through the main arteries of our city, or some analysis of that, I think that'd be great. Because I face it every day, and I know I bet every one of you do, too, so.
Other thoughts on infrastructure? I would just particularly echo what we've heard tonight about sidewalks. We desperately need more investments in that, and maybe that's one area for innovation that will give us some opportunities that we haven't had yet, so. I'd also-
When I think infrastructure, I tend to think of, of our water, our utilities, and the planning that we're having to either upgrade or maintain, and we're, we're behind. I think you all know that. Hadn't been consistent over several administrations, so, but I think, and I kind of told Director Kelson this, too, and I don't think he liked it, but I think we kind of really need to look at certain things, see where we are, and, because we're doing, there's a lot of initiatives that's starting to come out of utilities, which are good, good initiatives. But I don't necessarily want that pressure to be placed on our ratepayers with rate increases, because, I, I think you all know, we're kind of on a two-year autopilot, one from water and one from sewer side, and, you know, so at some point, and I'll rate think it is a, a problem for our lower-income members in the city, but that's something I think we need to look at. And I'm concerned about, and we, we talked about this a couple of years ago, how it seems the rate increases are more on autopilot. And I know the IDM's gotta approve some stuff, I know the board's gotta do some stuff, I know we've gotta do some stuff. But I'm a little bit, somewhat concerned with that, a little bit, yes.
I agree. Oh, I do, I do have, I didn't want to cut you off, so that's why.
No, no, I'm fine, that's okay.
No, I agree, and, and I know we've got, I've had some pretty in-depth conversations with Vic at times about the, you know, payment assistance that, when folks do get in trouble with that, but of course, it depends on them, kind of knowing about the assistance available. I think it's a pretty good program as those go, but while this will be administratively more complex, the trend in the utility industry, energy utilities especially in more progressive states, is percent of income payment plans, if not for everyone, then for and below a certain income threshold. Utility rates generally are inherently regressive, they're, they're like a flat tax, right? So, maybe that's something that we can talk about and begin to explore with City Bloomington Utilities, again, probably administratively more complicated, and I'm sure there are barriers and challenges, but it seems to me like it's probably the equitable thing to do in the direction we should be heading, to have a more equitable rate structure. So, I don't know if that's been explored more deeply in the past, but piggybacking on Jim's good ideas and observations, I think.
I'm on the second floor of the, I agree with everything they both said.
Anything else on infrastructure? City services? And as we thought about this, this is a lot of what would come under the heading of Public Works. So, sanitation, animal care and control, fleet, parking services. Jim, sorry.
I'll start. First, I, trash and recycle. I know Adam has brought us, did some reports and some cost pressures and these sorts of things, but I'm not so sure if I heard anything that's definite yet on potential rate increases to, for trash, and in particularly recycling. There's some structural things that, that's not really budget-related, but one of the things is, let's say I've got whatever that biggest container is, sixty-four gallon dilly, and it's like, I don't need that, you know, that's, and I want to go to a smaller container. It's my understanding that there's a fee to the, the customer to switch containers. I mean, that's something that needs to be looked at, I think, you know, because that, that's not an incentive for me to use less, you know, if I gotta pay extra money to-
To downsize.
Yeah, to, to downsize. So, I think that's something that needs to be, and I'd even, I like to hear the cost pressures on recycling and the rationale for raising these rates anyway. I think we gotta be real careful with things that you think are incentives, but they tend to de-incentivize in some cases, I think. But something for us to look at, at there, you know.
Okay. Yeah, Isabel?
Well, again, on the topic of sanitation, I am concerned about that there may not be enough employees in, in Public Works in the sanitation area. And the, I know there's been extra burdens as the number of unhoused community members increases and the number of encampments increases. There is a, a public health concern with accumulation of waste at those camps, and I know that, you know, Adam has sometimes gone out himself to address that, and I think that we need to consider the, dealing with trash at some of the encampments and having sufficient staff to, to do that. And just, I would like a, an honest assessment of, do we have sufficient staff to do the things that already we need to do as far as trash pickup and recycling and outreach in regards to sanitation?
Okay. Steve?
I was gonna save this for employees and staffing, but I want to piggyback on what I've just heard. In particular, in, in not only is sanitation worrisome, and it's staffing, but so is fleet. If we have less than half the mechanics that are necessary to maintain our fleet, that's a public safety problem. If the cars and the fire trucks that need to be maintained, can't be maintained because we don't have the staff to maintain them, you know, that's an issue. It's just an issue, it's, it's not the typical public safety issue that you would, you would think of. So, yeah, I'm particularly concerned about Public Works and whether or not they have the staff to do the many, many things that we expect of them, and I, I don't know what to do about it.
Jim?
Well, I think Steve's got a good point, but one, one thing that I will add there, I deal with dealerships from time to time and other people, and they have the same issues with staffing and, and actually ASI-certified blah, 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 then they go up to Martinville or whatever. So, that is a concern. I'm not so sure I'm as concerned as you are, not, not to minimize that, but it is a concern. But I just want us to know that's just not a city problem, a City of Bloomington problem, so. And once we solve or you solve city problems, I think Toyota would love you to solve theirs, too. Or, or Nissan, or, or whatever.
Everything's about everything.
But, well, that's true.
And therein lies a consulting practice.
But, yeah, good, good point, you know.
City services?
I, I really would like to see us hold the line on city service fees. And this is, this is the thought process with me is, we're, we've done pretty well with adding funding and resources to the- adding funding and resources to the city. And we've also increased the burden on our citizens, um, a little bit, you know, with some fees and, and, uh, local income tax. And so I, I would love us to, just try really hard to limit any increases for essential city services. Um, and I'm not unrealistic in my mind, but I, I, I think it's, I think that's an important part of what we do and have a fiduciary responsibility. Let's make sure that i-if there is a rationale, that it's a pretty darn good rationale for if we're gonna, if we're gonna ask for any increase. Um, yeah. So, um, I, I would like to look at my constituents and I and say, yeah, we held the line on city services as hard and as long as we could. And, um, I'm not privy to all the budgetary concerns of each, how, you know, how city services is self-funding or not, but, you know, I, I, I think that's a, an important thing that we do, uh, hold the line for our constituents. So.
Do you have an example of city service fees that-
Oh, I think the one-
Just trash fees.
The one that comes up the most, yes. You know, when that, when that came out, you know, then people for a while were all upset that, you know, we were going to change that. And, um, um, and, and I, I don't know if there's pressures for fees to be changed in, you know, park and rec. Is there, you know, some upward pressure on that? Um, so those kind of things that have to do with, um, what we do daily in our lives and enjoy the city. City's a wonderful place. It's really, we've done so many really great things just in the short time that I've been involved. Uh, and way before that, we've really done a great job of it. It's, the city has, uh, uh, and, and collectively, I think it's, it, it's a lot of, a lot of many positive things. So, yeah, yeah, I think those smaller things like the fees and, um, let's try really, really hard to make sure we hold it for our constituents.
Quick comment if I may. Um, I think Ron's right, and that's why I asked for clarification there. Um, timing has a lot to do with a lot of the things. Um, and I think it's, it's just, I'll just say piss poor timing for us to talk about these type of increases when we just raised the lit just last year. So we've already raised that and we've got an additional 14 million or so. Now we've got plans, we've got buckets, we've got things. I understand that. But on the heels of that, to raise my trash fee or to, you know, raise my parking meter fee and all this, I'm not saying it's not needed, but I'm just saying timing is a big part of it. And we're in city government, so we kind of know some stuff. But my neighbors don't know none of this. All they know is that I gotta pay more money for this. I gotta pay more for that. And you're taking it out of my paycheck. And so, yeah, I mean, I know it's not that simple, but it is to them. And those are the folks that we have to talk to. Uh, my water bill just raised up too, you, you see. And I think sometimes we do these in a vacuum. Well, I just need it for this, and I need it for that in transit. I need, we tend to forget how that compounds on our residents sometimes. So it's all about priorities, about using the funds we've got, um, how we can manipulate some other things. But I agree with that.
And this is symbolic as well.
Well-
Somewhat symbolic as well.
Somewhat, yeah.
Yeah.
Steve?
Well, I mean, uh, it's clear that, uh, we as council members have a job to do a better job of letting people know why cost increases are going in, because, you know, this expense or that. But I would gently push back and say, look, right now, we're spending a million dollars a year out of the general fund for sanitation. Half the people in Bloomington don't get to have their trash picked up by the city. They're paying that tab, and they don't get any trash service. Now, it's fine. I mean, I pay taxes for schools and I don't use the schools. Uh, so we can talk about that. But I mean, why shouldn't, uh, the trash, uh, the monthly trash fee go up on those people who, uh, do get the benefit of the service? So that that million dollars a year that people in multifamily housing have to pay over and above everything else they're paying, don't have to pay it. I mean, like, uh, I don't blame any constituent of yours for being upset about something going up.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's going to be incumbent on us to explain that if we raise trash fees so that sanitation breaks even, it's because it was inequitable in the first place. I mean, that's a, that's the argument that we had a year or two ago about sanitation fees. So, I mean, why, why shouldn't we adjust those prices to eliminate that fiscal inequity?
If that was for me, it'd look pushback.
Oh, it's kind of a general question. I don't know. I've just-
I never said we shouldn't. I just think we need to be, and we like to use this word, be more equitable in how we apply it and how we look at it. And that's all what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Um, and, and understand, we got DEI, we got a bunch of stuff. But one of the things that we really, really need to deal with is the have and the have-nots. Okay? And I tend to be talking on the, the bottom half of the nots right now. Well, and the rest of us that can't afford it, we, we, we feel it too. But, but those, you know, and this isn't, this isn't an argument I rebuttal.
Well, no, no, I think I'm speaking for many of the have-nots who are living in rental housing as multifamily, and the haves are the ones who are getting trash pickup at their single-family house. And these are people who would love to own a single-family house and get to have that service. So I think I am speaking for some have-nots here.
Yeah, we should discuss it. Thank you.
But, and, and in fact, what just, what just connected in my head was these kind of issues and then what Matt was talking about, some of the, uh, that some things may be based on AI, um, for lower-income folks. Because, because I think that's what we're talking about. We're, we're, we're not talking about people that have lots of money and can really afford an extra two bucks a, a month for trash. We're talking about people that may struggle with some of these increased fees. And I never heard it, I never heard of that before, Matt. So-
For some income payment plans.
I, I mean, to me, that's just like, okay, that, I know it's difficult, but it's, it's also really a brilliant way to be able to solve that kind of issue.
Isabel, and then I want to note that John and Mary Catherine have both stopped writing. So, so I don't know what that means.
I, I wanted to ask if we have an eight o'clock end time? And if so, it's 7:38. And I wanted to make sure the public had an opportunity to comment as well.
I, I would agree.
Do we have an eight o'clock end time?
We, the mayor does. Ms. Carmichael?
I'm Mary Huckle, Mary.
So we can get through this.
Why don't we move on to, to employees and staffing? And we've already covered bits of this, I know, in others. But why don't we move on to employees and staffing?
And we will have at least one more of these.
Yeah, we have another one of these.
At least.
And plus, and we have budget weeks. Employees and staffing? Isabel and then, and Matt?
Um, I think we need to keep up with the cost of living going up and commit to increasing our employees' pay, uh, relative to the Consumer Price Index.
Yeah, I think, um, across the city, I'm, I'm generally, generally just, uh, concerned about retention and recruitment and wanting to, to make sure we're, we're keeping up with, with, um, our competitors, whether it's, uh, the municipalities, uh, perspective of police, fire, absentee staff, others, civil city staff, or, um, other private employers, nonprofits that folks can go work at. Um, so trying to make sure that our, you know, benefits packages are competitive. Uh, we've, of course, instituted, um, you know, family leave, for instance. Uh, I think I agree with, with Isabel that, um, a policy to try to better match, uh, the actual adjustments in people's buying power through the Consumer Price Index would be really, really great. Um, I know we did a lot last year with things on top of the cost of living adjustments, sort of one-time, uh, benefits. But I guess I'd like to explore more deeply the idea of, of tying cost of living adjustments to Consumer Price Index and understanding if that's done by the municipalities, where, what the, what the challenges and barriers are to that. I'm imagining the fact that our revenue streams are sort of decoupled from those changes is certainly one of them. Um, but still, I mean, the, the pragmatic reality for, for our staff is that, you know, salary today doesn't go as far as it did, you know, last year. Um, I, uh, support the clerk staff's, uh, request and, and looking into, um, significant adjustments for, for their staff, uh, as well as the clerk herself to, um, better align with, uh, similar grades and experience levels. Uh, actually, I think the council staff too needs to be looked at in that light. Um, in particular, um, I know our, our, um, council attorney makes, is a, is a grade 12 and makes, uh-
12, a grade?
11.
12.
12 and makes, you know, um, sorry, makes, makes less than, than all the other grade 12s by, by a good bit, uh, with, with, with the possible exception of, um, I'm not sure if the clerk is also a grade 12. Um, but looking at those things, I think the clerk's office, clerk's, um, staff and council staff have always sort of been dealt with and seen separately. But, um, I'm not sure that's quite fair or, or right, um, with respect to their salary level. So I want to look at both of those things as we, as we build staff budgets. Um, and, uh, would, would voice my support too for, you know, looking seriously at, at the Bloomington Fire Department's, um, union contract, uh, and accelerating that on the basis of, of retention challenges. Um, which would also have budget implications, though it's not necessarily directly tied to, um, the budget's timeline. Uh, I think that's it.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I'll jump in. Kate?
Nope.
Ron?
I'm listening, Isabel.
Um, ditto fire, ditto the clerk's office. Um, and I would, I also keep thinking about the pretty substantial transition that we're all going to be seeing next year. We're welcoming a new mayor, we're welcoming a few new council members probably. Um, I, I do believe we need the DEI training as part of what we do for all of our staff. And I think all of the training that needs to be incorporated, uh, what we do to orient our new council members, um, whatever the new mayor may need, all needs to be part of that comprehensive planning. So we need a coordinated approach, um, and a comprehensive approach to the kind of training that we're going to need. Um, I think with those transitions comes IT support too, uh, and IT upgrades. So we may want to keep that in mind as well. But, anything else on employees and staffing? Okay, climate act?
Can I say one?
Oh.
This is really not budget contingent wise. Um, and we talk about salaries, we talk about a lot of things. But I know I got to be careful. And this is not accusatory in any manner. But I think we really need to start looking at the work environments and, and where our people actually work and what they do and how they relate with one another and relate with supervision and field supporter or lack thereof. Um, I'm not saying that's going to take another 50,000 bucks. I'm not saying that. Um, but I think as part of the training, maybe that's part of it. Um, I do know, there's some things we need to do. I mean, we need salaries, we need certain things. Um, but I think we need to ensure that our work environment is as good as it possibly can be and that, uh, do what we can make sure people feel valued, um, and worthy and, and happy to be there. So, okay. I'll leave that where it is right now.
Thanks. Climate Action Plan Sustainability.
Let's do it. Let's do the climate action plan.
You got that?
Let's do it.
I see, just do it.
I think we've made a, a lot of progress here with additional staff and, um, mechanisms for accountability and reporting, uh, perspective of the plan, um, and dedicated funding, uh, for programmatic, programmatic support. Um, I would just encourage, uh, being intentional and thinking very critically about making sure we have adequate staff, even if it's like special project staff and ESD and that sort of thing, to adequately leverage the unprecedented level of federal dollars that we can, uh, get right now. Some of it's formula funding, a lot of it is not. In fact, most of it is competitive, uh, awards. And that, of course, takes time to apply for. But Bloomington, because of the groundwork we've laid over the last five-plus years and more, uh, is really well-suited to take advantage of a lot of those dollars. So that's, uh, my plug.
Anything else?
Yeah, do the plan. It's a fantastic plan.
It is.
It's a fantastic plan. Lots of, lots of great things in it. We, there's many things we can keep ticking off. Yep.
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 Okay.
Great plan.
Well, I guess the, the relevant question here is, do we need more staff for any particular aspect of the plan?
What do you think, Matt? I think the answer would be, of course, more would be helpful.
Well, that's, I, I mean, I think it's incumbent on all of us to sort of try to look at the plan and say, well, which things need to come first and what do we need to do it? And do we already have the resource to do it? Or do we need more resources for it? That's, that's a tough one. I mean, it's a systemic thing across the board, across all these departments. So I don't, I don't have any answers.
I would just specifically call out the anaerobic digester study and, um, that this would help us fulfill at least 10 points in our climate action plan and is probably worth the, the investment. I mean, we'd have to talk financing and how to, uh, how to perhaps leverage some of the, the federal dollars that the consultant pointed to. But I would like to move ahead with that.
Do you have that?
That.
Yeah. Good point, Steve. Good point, Isabel. Yeah?
Well, when they, when they finish their analysis, you know, just in the USB board meeting yesterday, we talked about all that. And there's costs in certain things. And I think they had a couple of consultants there and, and different levels and high use, mid-use, you know, these sorts of things.
We have the same thing. It's always for-
Right, exactly. And that's where I got all that. Thank you for that. Um, but that's a good discussion. Um, and again, I, I really don't want to be a stickler and I hope no one sees it that way. But, and I don't have my notes, but I was kind of surprised at the cost. I was a little bit surprised at the cost that, that we're going to deal with. Now, the long-term benefits, I mean, I'm not saying it's worth it or not. But when we're talking budgeting, then there's a prioritization process. So if we do all that, I'm fine with that. We may not have a downtown circular. I just said that to get you going. Just, just a priority. So-
Don't torture the man.
But I, I totally agree with him. And from what I'm hearing, it's a positive thing and it'll help, um, even more than the 10 points actually, probably. But, okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Anything else? Diversity, equity and inclusion. We've talked about this in terms of training and investments there. Matt?
Uh, the clerk boldness comments are very well taken, that, uh, this is, uh, non, this is work that needs to continue forever, you know? And, and we need to continue learning, continue growing, continue, um, training, uh, as elected officials, as staff. So I think, uh, support for that and ongoing fashion and thinking about what that means, what the next steps are is, is, uh, important. Um, as we wrapped up climate action plan, I almost mentioned, but, uh, don't intend to push for this. But I've, I've long held and still hold the view that a cabinet-level position over climate that's crossed, that's in the mayor's administration and across the front metal would be, um, ideal. Uh, I think the same, I think, I think it was actually, um, Don Griffin when he was deputy mayor, who mentioned the possibility of, um, a similar cabinet-level role, you know, over, over, um, diversity, equity, inclusion. And I, and I think that's, uh, a valid consideration as well. So I wanted to mention it here. Um, with respect to public engagement, that's, that's, um, we have a meeting May 4th, uh, scheduled for, um, the Special Committee on Council Processes. And one of the several larger issues we're digging into this year is, is with respect to public engagement as well as, um, equity in our processes, legislative and otherwise. Um, and I, and I have a feeling that there, there will be resourcing needs, uh, to address gaps and barriers there. Um, the sort of bare minimum of access, uh, is, is not equitably achieved. Um, and so it takes intention to overcome that. Um, you know, progressive cities, uh, for instance, pay, community-based organizations pay community members, uh, from underrepresented groups to engage in the development of plants and things like that. Um, we may need additional assistance from a, you know, nonprofit or coalition of nonprofit organizations that are outside the city that would need some, some financial resourcing to help, uh, build connections and engagement, uh, in places where it's, you know, lacking right now. It's just our sort of default, um, uh, public comment period at city council meetings or whatever the other engagement channels are. So even childcare and things like that, long-term, I know it's been discussed just at a, and translation services at, at a very high level. This gets very expensive very quickly- services, at a very high level, this gets very expensive very quickly. Anything on that front would probably have to look like a pilot program to try it and maybe could leverage grant dollars, federal opportunities, things like that. But I think it's a big part of building a more equitable city and addressing those systems, challenges, that will probably need some resourcing. I don't know what that looks like yet. We're going to dig into it as some from our perspective as council, but I anticipate needs there. But yeah, may not have, know what those are, you know, in time for the city budget, but perhaps the mayor's office and city staff are already thinking about some of those things as well, and it's an opportunity for some collaboration. Thanks.
The diversity, equity and inclusion, I think it's just because I took the training on fishing through no before, is that, is that right? And when I worked with the state of Indiana, we did training always on that kind of platform. I wonder why a DEI, a regular and ongoing DEI, could not be folded into the no before? And so everybody that would have to go through no before, employees of the city and all, it would just be, that would be a part of the whole scenario and that would be folded in and it would be ongoing and regular.
Okay.
Jim?
Still a phrase from my colleague, I'm gonna push back a little bit on that. Good idea, but a whole big part of DEI and particularly in equity is learning backgrounds and different things, talking with people, sharing experiences, lived experiences and pushing, you know, it's easy to say, don't pick up a flash drive and put it in.
Don't give someone your credit card number.
That's easy, but it's quite another to talk about backgrounds, how people feel about equity issues being, how they're being treated. And this is all different groups. So I think you got a little something there, but this is one of the things that's going to have to have that human element, that face-to-face communication element. One of the best things that came out of this DEI training, I thought, was when people would reach out and say, Jim, can we go have coffee or lunch? Zoom, can we do that? I thought that was one of the best things, and I wasn't quite near enough, I don't think, because there aren't enough of us that, you know, I'll be going to have coffee every damn day. But I thought that was very valuable and made some, you know, and a lot of my colleagues I went out and talked with, and even though we know each other, it helps to get into that, if that makes sense. So I agree with you, I'm just not so sure I'd put DEI on that platform in particular.
Fair enough.
Isabel?
It's 7:53, I wonder if we could go to public comment?
Yeah. I would support. Yeah, why don't we do that, and then we could come back to Creed, Tiff and Other. What?
He's messing with Dave.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we go to a period of public comment on this budget advance, on this budget advance process or on the budget itself? Mr. Lucas, while I look and see who's interested here, could you extend the invitation on Zoom?
Yes, if there are folks on Zoom that'd like to comment, please let us know by raising your hand. You can find the raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting post to let us know if you'd like to speak.
Do you need a microphone for that?
I don't know, do I?
Yes.
Hello? It doesn't amplify.
No.
Okay. Dave Askins with the B-Square Bulletin. I heard some things tonight that made me want to read aloud a giant chunk of state code, but before I do that. It's not that giant a chunk. All right. I wanted to circle back to something that Councilmember Flaherty mentioned at the start. He talked about getting a better understanding of the revenue streams that actually feed into the funds, and I think there's actually one way to approach the entire budget process. It's not the only way, and, you know, there could be a hybrid of approaches. But if you, if you really took that approach for the whole budget process, you might start by saying, okay, let's look at every fund and try to project how much money is going to be flowing into the fund in the next year and figure out how you want to spend that specific money in that fund. And after you get done, you ask, now, have we achieved all the things that we were hoping to achieve? And have we spent all the money, or have we spent too much of the money? And that's very different from the way the council has traditionally started the process, which is to say, sort of, here's what I want to do, and I think maybe there's some money over there and maybe over there that we could use to pay for it. So let's take as an example, the parking meter fund, because it got mentioned tonight as a way to pay for the ongoing operation of a downtown circulator. Well, the parking meter fund is pretty rigorously regulated by state code, and that's the chunk I want to read aloud. It's, there's 10 ways you can spend parking money, and these are the only ways. And the way you can tell that it's the only ways is that the word "only" is right there. It says dispersments from the special fund may be made only to pay. And then there's 10 things. This is the chunk I wanted to read aloud. How am I doing on time? Oh, we'll hit it easy. One, the purchase price, rental fees and cost of installation of the parking meters. The cost, this is number two, the cost of maintenance, operation and repair of the parking meters. Number three, incidental costs and expenses in the operation of the parking meters, including the cost of clerks and bookkeeping. Number four, the cost of traffic signal devices used in the municipality. I'm going to pause on that one because that reminded me of something else that Councilmember Flaherty mentioned. So he mentioned wanting to upgrade traffic signals. Traffic signals are really expensive, but here's a source of funding. The state legislature has said, we bless this exact use of the parking meter fund to, to pay for traffic signals that are used in the municipality. Number five, the cost of repairing and maintaining any of the public ways, curbs and sidewalks where parking meters are in use and all the public ways connected with them in the municipality. So if you want to repair sidewalks, parking meter fund. Number six, the cost of acquiring by lease or purchase suitable land for off-street parking facilities to be operated or leased by the municipality. So if we want to build more parking garages, great, this says that we can use the money for that. Number seven, the principal and interest on bonds, I'm not going to bore you to death with the final three points, none of them include the cost of operations for a downtown circulator. So I think it's worth really, at least at some point, making it the council's business to look at the funds, to, for the council to develop sort of some basic expertise in knowing, okay, what can we use these funds for? What are they designed for? Were they meant to be used for? Because it might give you some ideas about some other ways to spend money that you hadn't thought of before. That's all I got.
Thank you. Stephen, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do. First up on Zoom is Mary Morgan.
Mary, welcome. You'll have five minutes, please go ahead.
Okay, thanks. First, I'd like to just thank you for opening up this session for public commentary tonight. I think it's great to have the opportunity to weigh in at this early stage. I was very glad to see housing listed as a budget priority, and the fact that you had a discussion about that shows that you recognize that we do have a housing crisis. I work with an organization called Heading Home of South Central Indiana, and several of you attended a learning session that we hosted last night related to housing insecurity. So you know that many organizations are working hard to address this very issue, and we are all eager to work with you and the city administration to find solutions. So I guess I just hope that you will use us all as a resource as you identify funding priorities for the next city budget. We are willing partners. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else present? Or anyone else on Zoom? Okay, with that, let's come back. And Mr. Mayor, I know we lose you. Creed, Tiff and Other Funds, Matt?
Before the mayor left, I wanted to get this one in. No, specifically, I think we have, gosh, what was it? I had it in my notes and I lost it. The monies that were in the Thompson and, from the Thompson and Downtown Creeds that are now in the general fund, I think there's general interest among the council in accounting for those separately. I know that can be done while it remains in the general fund, but I think the creation of a different fund and an interfund transfer of the exact amount that remains after last week's appropriation would be better and more desirable from the council's perspective, so I wanted to express interest in that. Had our council attorneys look at it, I believe the council itself can establish a fund. Of course, the mayor can bring legislation to do so as well. We, of course, can't initiate an interfund transfer, but we could request it and create the fund to do it. So just wanted to lay that option out for folks to be aware of and my support for it. So, that's all.
I want to echo what Matt just said. I feel very strongly about the Creed money, as the mayor knows. But the discussion we had about the Trades District tech building, I mean, in the course of that discussion, we were told that all Tiff money is, the administration's eager to send it to Hopewell, which is why they couldn't take any money for that building. But that's a city project that's the size of a neighborhood, and yet it's not a part of our comprehensive plan. And the administration has insisted that it doesn't have to send it to us. The same thing goes with the 501(c)(3). It's not something that the council, I mean, we only have indirect control in that we can reject certain ordinances. We already have, we almost rejected the alley vacation ordinance in Hopewell because the administration, you know, like, I think underestimated our concern about it. I mean, I am literally ready to vote against the budget if we don't have resolution on both the convention center this year and if there isn't substantive change in the law to, to make Hopewell regulated like any other neighborhood of the city. It should be an overlay, not entirely, I mean, it's, right now, it's a development plan of the administration, which claims that they're not developers, but they're keeping it, you know, I mean, is it a PUD? I don't know. All I know is that the council doesn't have direct oversight over it, and that's, it's time that it changed, so.
Didn't we create an overlay?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but didn't we create an overlay for Hopewell?
We did.
Yes.
You know, like, but where the, who's going to be approving the plans for what gets developed there?
It's got zoning code. I mean, folks can follow code. That's how we, it's not a plan due to development, it's self.
Okay. Maybe I'm wrong.
And we have it on.
That was for you. That was for you. I wanted you to hear that.
Maybe.
Creed, Tiff, or Other Funds? I mean, I will agree with Steve that the Tiff funds, that's a huge amount of money, and we only get consulted when there's some expenditure over $5 million. And I know legally, that's the only time that we have to be consulted, but I feel like as a co-equal branch of government.
Right.
We should be brought into these decisions and the planning for use of the Tiff funds more than we are.
She said it better than I could. And she wasn't wrong.
Under the Other Funds category, I'll echo support for what Mr. Askins said in respect to better clarity across the board from revenue sources, funds that go to legal limits of their use and to help tell the better picture. I've dug into this law myself and looked at the statutory limits. I haven't compiled it for every fund we have, and, you know, the complicated thing is money is fungible, so, you know, there are lots of uses that are under the parking meter fund, for instance, maintaining parks, other things that could displace money to operate a circulator shuttle, for instance. So it's not as easy as saying, oh, this fund says it can't be used for that, so.
So it can't.
We depend on the expertise of the controller's office to be able to help work that puzzle of limited uses of some things in line with our goals. And, yeah, you know, I think steps can be taken, both individually in terms of due diligence and our own research, but also aided by the expertise and direct knowledge of controller and city staff to facilitate that so that we're all on a clearer, have a clearer view of, yeah, that full picture, really. So, that's it.
Creed, Tiff and Other Funds? And Other. Can't wait to see what this becomes.
Is that where social services would fall under?
What, Jack Hopkins or something?
I'm just flat-out saying, if at all possible, I would like to see Jack Hopkins at least double, at least double. I've heard some other stuff, about a million. I mean, that's wish lists and that would cover some things, but I think from a budgeting standpoint, double.
What would you cut?
They don't have to answer.
Once they say they're willing to do it.
Then we'll talk.
Probably be a circulator.
Having fun again, y'all, we're spending. My goodness.
You set them up? You're not.
Seriously, I think we've talked about that, and that this is tough. I mean, those, this is tough. And I think that there, those are some of the things that the city can do with our nonprofits and social service agencies, and we can increase it more. We can't do everything, but those are some more direct things that we could do that affect our constituents. So I'd like to see that increase substantially.
I would echo the emphasis on Jack Hopkins, the emphasis on Heading Home. I think they are doing critical work, all of them, in this community, and I think they deserve our support. One of the things under the Other Heading, the next few months, the next few weeks even perhaps, are likely to bring some additional clarity around the convention center and what kind of mechanism is going to be taking that forward. Food and beverage money is obviously going to play the major part in that, but there may be a need for master planning around the downtown in the area of the convention center or something like that, and I would encourage the city to keep in mind efforts related to the convention center that are not payable by food and beverage.
I would assume they could be payable with food and beverage tax. I think there's sort of a, of or related to convention center or tourism interests that I would assume if it's a.
I'm not sure what the of or related to, how far that extends, so.
Well, the county.
It does extend, I mean, if we receive 9% or so and we can spend it accordingly, we may have an agreement with the county to build, but we can also, I mean, the county used money to do its own.
It's true.
Yeah, limestone museum, so.
Well, for the statue up front, and, you know. Anything else under Other? Okay. We've taken care of public comment for the E, yes.
Sorry, one minor other. I would just note that Jim's points are well-taken about, you know, priorities and can't do everything, and we talk about a lot of things we want to do, but we'll have to scale back other things if you want to do them. Though, for the moment, we do still have additional federal assistance through our funds, other opportunities to leverage federal opportunities, which can help.
You have, there are about $22 million remaining. I didn't do the math, so.
As well as, close to 15 million that were in Creed funds that I'm asking to put into a separate fund, but that is capital that can go to revitalize parts of our community in the same way that those monies were always intended, so that's Other.
I always find it helpful whenever the budget presentations include information about when we've leveraged outside funds. So to the extent that that can be incorporated in budget, if you spend this, you've leveraged X amount in outside, in federal money or in state money or in whatever. I always find that helpful. So.
Yep, me too.
Next steps, we have additional budget advance on June. Isabel, help me.
13th.
13th, thank you. And then...
What are we expecting at that meeting?
Let's talk about that. So what, how do we want to use that particular meeting? What numbers will we have, if any, by that point?
We probably won't have any.
Do we want... Jeff on this call? I can't tell. Jeff?
We will not have any numbers. We don't need numbers until July and August. We won't have much to give you.
Okay. Beyond what we have now, so, which is not much.
Can I ask what the department heads are doing to prepare while they don't have numbers? Do they do any preparation over the summer?
I'm not sure I heard you.
Yes, I was waiting to see if...
And I was waiting for you. I didn't want to, go ahead, Jeff. You've done more of these budgets than I have, so I'll defer to you and then add on.
Essentially, we started talking about the memos themselves. So the program budgets are an essential part of what we do and what we present. So during May and June, really in May, they'll start working on budgets and personnel allocations. In June, the mayor will meet with them to review those programs. And those are basically any changes to those, either adds, deletes, or modifications. And then as we move into July and start to get numbers, we, it will give them a first set of numbers in late July. And then once we get the final big piece, which is the lit, which is August the 1st, then we spend the next few weeks finalizing requests and whether we need, you know, if there's things that we didn't think we could do that we now can do, we add those in. If the revenues are not sufficient, then those numbers have to get in some fashion in order to provide you all with the full program budget prior to the budget hearings in late August. The number crunching really begins in July and later July and early August.
So this question is directed as much to the administration as to council, but what would we want to accomplish at a June budget advance?
It seems to me like we have to be able to determine, to make that of any value, we have to be able to say, "Can we save the nearest million, how big each budget is going to be? Can we, you know, like, can we have any certitude that certain programs that we've talked about are definitely going to be funded and certain ones definitely aren't going to be funded?" You know, like, because by the time we get the departmental budgets, they're all but set in stone. Like, they, no department head is particularly willing to open up the hard work they've done to, you know, put their puzzle together. But if they haven't prioritized some of the broad concerns that we have, you know, when do we ever get to see those concerns unless the department heads graciously include them?
Are we, are we better off with a budget advance in July when we get back from break?
Well, I think there are a lot of questions that we asked in this session and data we wanted to see. So I think that at least we could, that, those aren't like finalized budget numbers, right? But I think some of that could probably come out by then.
Okay.
I think we could also decide potentially not tonight if we want to move it. I don't know. Like, if, or maybe we add another one and then cancel one if we want.
I agree with Kate about, there are some numbers we've asked for that we could see that.
I want to see the outstanding numbers of the Creed, the Tiff, all those that we've been talking about. It'd be great. And if we're gonna do it in June, at least that would be a little bit extra idea that we might be...
I think the administration has those codes. I think with you, it's our state funding and some lit, these sorts of things.
It's good that we're presented to us in a clear and easy to digest manner.
Well, I mean, that's why we're talking now. So when we get them around the 1st of August, all this other things that we're talking about with department heads, that's probably most fruitful, which I hate to say this, during budget hearings. But, you know, I don't know. I just don't want to be in a position where we feel like we're putting pressure and, you know, and this is it. If you don't do this, then, I mean, I'd like to get stuff settled before we get to that point.
Might the June meeting serve as like, you and Mayor Hamilton and Controller Underwood just listen tonight? You can sit with it, digest some things. We put out a lot of diverse interests, a lot of alignment, but also, you know, unique perspectives from everybody. Like, would it be helpful to workshop what you all are thinking about some of those things in June, to have like more of a deliberative back and forth?
Because you will have been looking at trade-offs if you're gonna...
As opposed to just another listening session, you know? What you're most interested in pursuing and prioritizing from what you heard from us and talking about challenges of some things that we've asked for, whether it's available funding, you know?
Well, I will, you know, we're... I think anytime we have an exchange of information, it's to the good. So, yeah, absolutely. And I think that would inform what you're doing and would also inform what we can ask of our department heads as they put their budgets together. So I think that's great.
Perhaps we can treat tonight as sort of an advanced budget questions where we had written questions out and then they responded to them in detail. There were some things tonight that we asked about that, maybe we didn't anticipate this, but that could use specific answers before the next or by the time of the next budget advance so that we don't have to go there and say, "Well, I'll have to get back to you. We don't know that." Like, you know what we wanted to know from tonight, and could we make sure those questions are answered at the June?
I like that. Sure. Okay. So June 13, we have a budget advance at 6:00 PM, and I'm not sure where. For some reason, it's not in council chambers because I know we've been displaced for that.
June 13, maybe?
NICS?
June 13. No, it is decidedly not at NICS, something though that is. And then we will look forward to feedback and commentary from the administration based on what we've shared tonight. All right.
Thanks, Ms. Kevin. Thanks, colleagues.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, council staff.